All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 24th, 2025, and this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and on the district website. It was also sent to the West Bend Community Memorial Library, the Daily News, WRYU, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'm going to pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda is to consider approving the agenda. The agenda was presented to us in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Before I call the roll, I should notice that we act—I should give notice that we have a quorum of our board present. We have six members physically present, and Joe Pickler is joining us online. And so, Joe, can you hear us all right?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Can hear you loud and clear. Fantastic. Great. So, since Mr. Pickler is joining us remotely, we're going to do our votes by roll call. So, we have a motion and second to approve the agenda. I will call the roll. Dr. Temez, Mr. Jenkins, Ms. Kruger, Ms. Lang, Ms. Ergot, Mr. Zweiger votes yes, and Mr. Pickler.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have an agenda. We unanimously approved. So, we move now to student representative reports. And so, tonight, we have our student representatives here, I believe, correct?
We've got our recognition. So, you've got your A.D.s—
Oh, I'm sorry.
—ready to recognize students.
Oh, great, thank you. Then I must have that out of order. My apologies here.
While you get organized, I can tell you that the first state recognition that's up is the girls' diving team. So, I believe we have our athletic director—hiding behind that screen—coming on up to introduce our coach and student athlete. Thank you, Mackenzie.
Great.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Mackenzie Wellnack, the East Athletic Director. I'm excited to bring up Alex Kane. He is our girls' swim and dive coach, and he will be speaking about and introducing our state qualifier for diving this year, Blythe Griggs.
I'm Alex Kane, the diving coach, and this is Blythe. Blythe is a sophomore, and she has been making quite the splash ever since she came into diving, actually, the reverse opposite of that, because the whole idea of diving is to not make a splash. So, she's been doing that very well. She—last year, so JV is six dives, varsity is 11 dives. Last year, she—her best 11 dive meet was about a 320, 330, and her first 11 dive meet this year was 30 points higher than that. So, she's been absolutely crushing it this year, obviously making it to state as a sophomore, which is a pretty big accomplishment. I do always like to share the story of her learning a reverse dive. So, basically, reverse dive is probably the hardest dive that there is to learn, and this was last year. She refused to do it in practice, and I said, "Okay, well, we're going to a diving meet, and you're going to do it in the diving meet, or you're going to fail the dive." And lo and behold, she comes out of nowhere and does this absolutely fantastic dive and has been doing reverses really well ever since. And actually, kind of a clutch move, she learned a reverse one and a half right before we went to state, and so, like, that actually helped her qualify for state. So, it was a big boost in her score to help her qualify for state. So, she's been doing really good. Again, she's only a sophomore, so I'm really excited to see where she's going to move forward in, you know, in the next two years. So, I have—I have big expectations for her. So, just expect us back next year.
Sounds great to us, yeah.
Just saying. Next year and the year after, maybe.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, congratulations. Appreciate it. Round of applause. All right. We also have recognition—state recognition for Washington County Trail Sharks, and I believe Erin Felber is going to present this.
Yes, hello. Thank you for having us. I am excited to call up our head coach, Sean Ryan, for the Washington County Trail Sharks, and there's a lot of Trail Sharks supporters here tonight, and our state qualifiers can come up as well.
Well, thank you so much to the West Bend School Board for this opportunity to recognize and celebrate our West Bend athletes. When our team district representative asked me to speak about these athletes and their accomplishments, I thought, "Where do I begin?" I mean, I may be biased, but I believe mountain biking is the best and toughest sport, requiring endurance and strength as well as skill and control of the bike in a natural environment off-road. It's a seamless blend of science and art. Watching these athletes grow in all these facets has truly been a privilege for all the coaching staff. So, let's just start the state championship race held at Truck Trails in Waterloo, Wisconsin. We pre-ride courses on Saturdays. The athletes get to learn the course. It had rained a couple days earlier—or that—earlier that weekend, and the course was soft. Not bad. The athletes learned the course, all but its quirks. Sunday was a different story. Now, mountain bikers have responsibilities to the trails that they ride. They know to treat them with respect. When they're wet and muddy, it's proper etiquette to stay off of them and let them dry out to prevent undue erosion. Races can be a different story. Races are run in all but dangerous weather, like lightning and tornadoes and what have you, but Truck Trails being a private venue with a full-time trail crew, said all systems go. So, you know where this leads. There might have been some mud. The course sustained a fair bit of rain overnight and early morning into the race day Sunday, and our riders had to put all their skills into practice, not only just to stay upright, but actually be competitive. So, 1,200 athletes from all of the state competed across several categories that day. Aiden Schubert on the end there, he—he's a senior at West Bend East, raced in a very tough four-lap category. That's roughly 20 miles off-road. He finished 45th. Excuse me. Now, mountain bike racing, like all of sport, involves some risks. Christopher Tremaine here on the end, close to me. He got caught up in an unavoidable accident that happened right in front of him, pretty much didn't have a choice in the matter, and he's okay. He's here. He's smiling, and he raced in the Central States Regionals just a couple weeks later, which I'll get into shortly. Jayden Schumacher from West Bend West is one of our sophomores in the three-lap category. Jayden finished an impressive 14th. Benji Tremaine, the one I haven't spoke to yet, is a sophomore at West Bend East in the two-lap category. It's roughly 10 miles. Benji finished 26th. All impressive finishes. So, as NICA grows, so does the programming and events. Just a couple weeks ago, the Central States Regionals was held in Fayetteville, Arkansas. It involved NICA leagues from 11 states totaling over 600 racers. Of those 600, 100 were from Wisconsin, and three of our athletes representing West Bend, which were Aiden, Christopher, and Benji, got to race down there. They were—great races were had by all in a round of race day experiencing very cold weather down in Arkansas—for Arkansas, for which our Wisconsin teams were jokingly blamed for bringing. Our athletes simply wore that as a badge of honor and represented well. So, congrats to these athletes as well as the Trail Sharks team. So, thank you all again.
Absolutely. Congratulations. We have another set of recognition tonight. Erin Felber, I think you're going to recognize our West girls' tennis. Is that right?
That is correct.
Great.
I have Sophie Gish here with me. Unfortunately, our head coach was not able to make it, so I get to be the head coach. So, Coach Blaze had some nice words to say about Sophie. Sophie Gish, well, thank you to the West Bend School Board for allowing me to share some of Sophie's wonderful accomplishments that led her to compete at the WI State Tournament this year. Sophie was a softball player when she started playing tennis her freshman year, and she's now a senior, and she is also a great athlete and a determined human being. So, when she decided to change her focus from softball to tennis, with the support of her family, she went all in. In four years, she went from a beginner tennis player to a state qualifier, with the type of focus and determination it takes to reach such a big goal. This past year, Sophie's senior year, she played number-one singles and had a great path to state with important wins over Hartford, Slinger, East, Port Washington, Beaver Dam, Watertown, and Grafton along the way. Having beaten every opponent competing in our subsectionals, Sophie received the number-one seed and continued to win at subsectionals and then again at sectionals to secure her bid for state. Sophie also went undefeated in the Glacier Trails Conference and racked up an overall record of 21 and 7. Nobody is a finer example of setting a goal and then doing the work to make it happen. She's a wonderful example of West Bend's finest, and I know the school district, the athletic department, and the school board are just as proud of her as I am. Thank you again, and congratulations, Sophie Gish. So, I just want to add, last year, I was at the state tournament standing next to Sophie, and she didn't qualify, but she told me, "Ms. Felber, I'm going to make it to state next year." And she did, and I'm very, very proud of her as well, and I know the whole athletic department is and the whole school. So, congrats to Sophie.
Congratulations. All right. I think that concludes our recognitions, but first, just wanted to say thank you to all the athletes for coming tonight. We know it's a school night, or is it a holiday night? In any case, you probably have other places maybe you'd rather be than a school board meeting, but we appreciate you sharing your accomplishments with us and allowing us to recognize you. Thank you also to the coaches and the parents. We see you all here as well for supporting these kids in their endeavor. Really appreciate it very, very much. What I'll also say is we—we're holding a public meeting, and so, we encourage everyone to stay for the whole meeting if you'd like, but we also know that you may have other places to go. So, if anyone wants to leave at this time, we will not be offended, but please feel free to stay as long as you would like. So, appreciate it very much. Thank you, everyone. All right. Thank you for coming. Let's pause for a moment to see. Next on our agenda will be public participation. So, since now where people are exiting the room, just looking to see if there are any common cards. I did not receive any in advance. So, we will move on then with our consent agenda. On our consent agenda tonight, we have minutes of the November 10th, 2025 regular board meeting. We have no contracts, no resignations, no retirements. We have an owner's representative contract for consideration and 2026, 2027 early learning community partner agreements. I think that concludes the consent agenda. Any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Temez. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Mr. Pickler?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Dr. Temez? Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Zweiger votes yes, and Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Great. That carries unanimously, and we have an approved consent agenda. We move then to reports, and our first report tonight is the 2025 School and District Report Card Report. I think I said that correctly. And we're welcoming Tina Van Rue, our District Data and Assessment Coordinator, to the podium, and we're excited to hear this report.
Hi, thank you for having me. As you know, the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, produces report cards for schools and districts annually. This year, they were released on November 11th, so tonight, I'm going to go through an overview of how those report cards come to be, as well as our district results with some school highlights. Most of the time, when I come to present to you, I'm talking about assessment data only. I just want to highlight that in these report cards, assessment data is only one piece of the puzzle. The report cards measure us on assessment and non-assessment measures, such as attendance, chronic absenteeism, as well as graduation rates. The report cards also show information that does not contribute to the scores or the ratings that we receive, but the info on there is just that, information only. This year, you will see some info you're familiar with, as well as some brand-new info that is required to be shared per Wisconsin statute. The report cards use multiple years of data, and they average that across the years so that we can see how we're doing as a system to teach, educate, attend, and graduate our students. Since they use multiple years of data, the most current year of data is always weighted a little more heavily than the historic years that are in the report card. The report cards have been in place for over a decade, and every couple of years, they make a variety of changes to them. The 24, 25 report cards are no exception. Arguably, they actually have the most changes since they originally took form, so much so that DPI has produced the image that you see on the right that tells you all the changes and how those changes allow us to compare or not compare our scores to previous report cards that we got. One of the big changes is that the score ranges that apply to the stars that are received all changed and actually increased in difficulty to attain. One of the areas in achievement uses historical data, but this year, they're using two years of data instead of three. Another area is target outcome groups, and that's where we look at a mini report card within the report card. That whole area used to be averaged around achievement. This year, for the first time, it's averaged around growth. And as I previously mentioned, some of the information-only categories are new to the report cards this year. All those changes are going to be revisited as I take you through the report card piece by piece. If you have questions as I'm going through it, please ask as we go. The report cards are scored based off of the scores of four different priority areas: achievement, growth, target outcome groups, and on-track-to-graduation. As already mentioned, they use multiple years of data. Each area is uniquely calculated and scored. That score for all four areas will be out of 100 points total, and then each area receives its own rank in a state comparison group. The first area we'll talk about is achievement. On the upper right, you'll see an image that takes our ELA state assessments and our math state assessments and gives our scores for each with a comparison bar underneath that shows how our score compared to other K-12 district scores. The ELA and math score is then combined into the overall score of a 75.1. The image on the bottom shows you how that score ranks across all other K-12 districts in the state. And in the area of achievement, West Bend ranked 77.1% better than the K-12 schools in the state. Achievement is one of the areas that went through a lot of changes for the report cards, so I wanted to just take a moment and talk a little bit deeper about how achievement is scored. In a typical year, there would be three years of data, with the most current year being weighted the heaviest. Because of the changes they made to the state assessments with Wisconsin Forward two years ago, as well as re-norming the ACT two years ago, they decided to omit that third historical year. So, only two years of data are going to be used. While achievement is its own priority category or priority area, achievement data is used in three out of the four priority areas for most schools, so the change to achievement has a major effect on the overall scores that could be earned. Again, usually, when I talk to you about assessments such as Forward, we always talk about are the kids proficient or not? Are they meeting grade-level expectations or not? How achievement is scored on the report cards is very different. When students take the test, you can see by the graphic, they fall into one of four performance lanes, anywhere from developing, approaching, to meeting, to advanced. When they score the report cards, they assign a value to each of those levels, and those values are what make that overall score. So, in this measurement, you'll see that students who are in three out of the four levels, approaching, meeting, or advanced, are going to contribute points to that overall score. So, kids who aren't proficient are earning points towards the score. The only population that isn't contributing to the score is the orange, the developing or the level one. Those students earn zero points to the overall score. So, this is very different than just looking at are kids at grade level or not. Any questions so far with achievement? The next priority area is growth. You'll see similar images. For the growth area, this is applicable to all students in grades four through 11. They want to know how they grew from taking the test in third grade to now taking it in fourth grade, which is why only fourth graders and up are scored. Similarly, you'll see a bar that shows our ELA and math scores for our district, as well as underneath a comparison bar for how K-12 state did. ELA and math are then combined for our overall girl's score of a 63.2. On the bottom right, similarly, you'll see how our ranking falls within the state, and here, we rank at 52.1% compared to other K-12 districts. Growth is one of those that uses multiple years of data. It can use up to four years. So, data now from 22, 21, 22, and on is used in the calculation of this, so it's the most historic data set in the whole report card. The third area is target group outcomes. The top graphic is going to look a little different because target group outcomes is a mini report card within this report card. So, here, you're only going to see our district scores. You're not going to have a comparison line underneath it for the state. Basically, they take the bottom quartile of our performers, and they measure them against kids that are not in this group. So, what's the gap between our lowest performers and our not lowest performers? We do still get rankings, so the bottom-right image will show you where our score ranks. So, our 60.2 score ranks us at 30.4% compared to other K-12 districts. The fourth area is called on-track-to-graduation. There are four different components: chronic absenteeism, graduation, third-grade ELA, and eighth-grade math. So, this is where that achievement category comes back into the report cards for a third time, but just through the lens of three ELA and eight math. You will see our district scores here compared to state, as well as our ranking, which places us at 72.6% higher than the state comparison K-12 groups. When you look at school report cards, you'll notice that graduation is outlined in a red box. Many of our schools don't graduate kids because they don't have seniors, so on a school report card in that area, you will see attendance listed instead of graduation. So, for our K-8 schools, attendance and the analysis of absenteeism, which is also a version of attendance, is almost double-scored in this area, putting a lot of importance into students attending school to be able to learn. Once every priority area gets its score, those four scores get weighted before we produce an overall score, which gives us our star rating. For the most part, the weighting—the pie that you see there starts off with every area at earning 25% of the overall score. The top two areas, achievement and growth, are going to waver heavier or lighter, depending on how—what percentage of your population is economically disadvantaged, and we'll revisit that again before we get into school results. Our overall results for the district this year was a score of a 72.4, earning us a four-star rating of exceeds expectations. That was harder to achieve this year. One of the changes that I prefaced earlier was that the score ranges aligned to the star ratings increased in difficulty. So, the table on the bottom shows you what the old score ranges used to be, and then the right-hand columns show you what the new score ranges are, as well as the change. So, it was at least one point more difficult to earn a two-star, three-star, four-star, et cetera. When DPI publicly released the report cards for the state on the 11th, they also produced two statements. So, 94% of the districts met exceeded or significantly exceeded, so West Bend falls in that 94%. The second statement they produced was that 85% of schools met exceeded or significantly exceeded, but in West Bend, 100% fell into that category. So, that's our schools are a great point of celebration to be that far above the state Now, we're going to get into just some of the information that comes in. So, everything that you're going to see here is really just for your eyes and interest. It does not apply to scoring or the star ratings at all. The post-secondary preparation here is showing us how our high school kiddos participated in and successfully passed class opportunities that can give them post-secondary readiness. The data does lag a little bit, so what you're seeing here are results or information from the 23, 24 school year. You'll see in the four areas advanced courses, dual enrollment, industry-recognized credentials, and work-based learning, our percentage of students that participate and pass at least one of those courses compared to the state average. Similarly, on the next slide, they produce that same information through the lens of art courses. The four areas are art and design, dance, music, and theater, producing our district's participation compared to the state's. New this year on the report cards is third-grade reading, and this is taking information from the Wisconsin Forward exam last year, and it's posting on the report cards as a compliance piece to Act 20, which is lovingly known as the Early Literacy Law. So, here, they are sharing the percent of students who were meeting or advanced on the Wisconsin Forward exam, or the DLM, which is that alternate assessment that some students take. And you can see our results compared to the statewide average. And this is truly assessment data, so it is only telling us what percent of kids were at grade level on these two measurements. The last new piece of information for the report cards is certain state and local law violations. I honestly don't have a ton of background information on this. It is definitely a compliance piece, so much so that DPI even put statements all over the pages saying that they don't recommend using this information to assess school safety or compare schools or districts. This information actually lives outside of our student information system's skyward, and I believe it was collected via surveys. So, we're at the mercy of who submitted what. It's the first year that they've done it, so there are data disclaimers in here as well because they can't be sure that everything that was submitted for a statewide average is actually accurate. In this data, they are looking for kind of crime data, to make it the simplest. Anything in eight different areas— Anything in eight different areas, ranging from homicide all the way down to disorderly conduct. So it's a real huge range of what they collected. I'm sure more information is going to be coming out about it as they have more years of it being shared publicly. We are going to shift gears and talk a little bit about our school's performance. So I wanted to revisit the priority areas and how they're weighted. Earlier, I mentioned that the top two areas, achievement and growth, kind of toggle back and forth in more weight or less weight based off of how economically disadvantaged we are. There is a threshold of 35%. So if your economically disadvantaged population is more than 35% of your student body, the growth area is going to be weighted more heavily, and that will contribute more to the overall score. If it's the other way, and if we're under 35%, achievement will be weighted more heavily and contribute to that overall score. For those reasons and many others, we aren't to compare overall scores, school to school, because everybody's weighting is unique. So much so, this is a picture of all of our schools just in West Bend, and there aren't two pies that are exactly identical. We have a couple that are close, but the ones that are close are, you know, a Silverbrook School and a high school. So they don't even have the same student body assessments, amount of grade levels, et cetera. So as we get into our school results, I encourage you to look at them as individuals and not compare. Earlier, you know, we were at 100% of our schools, meeting, exceeding, or significantly exceeding. And this is a nice graphic to show that. Every single school had a three-star, four-star, or a five-star. Some of our schools had some similarities in the celebrations that they have achieved. Specifically, Jackson and McLean Elementary. They both had celebrations in the area of where they ranked with their achievement scores. Both of them were in the top 25% of elementaries in the state. For Fair Park, Decorah, and Green Tree Elementary, they both shined in the areas of growth, and their growth ranks were in the top 25% of elementaries across the state. Silverbrook and Badger this year both increased their overall rating, earning an additional star, which is even tougher this year, knowing that you had to get one point, sometimes two points higher, to actually get that next star. For East and West High School, the growth scores are one of the things that we can compare last year to this year. And both of them saw increased scores in their growth area, particularly in math. This was the first time in five years that our math scores at the high school have been above the state level. And it's a huge celebration for them. Back in October, when the assessment data was publicly released, we provided the board with a report that showed how West Bend did compared to other districts in Washington County, as well as other districts who have similar demographics and spending to us. We wanted to be consistent and share with you the results of the county and our other comp group, just so you could see how they scored and were starred. In Washington County, every district had a three, four, or five star. And in our comp group for demographics and spending, all the districts had a three or a four star. And you can see where we fell as the scores are listed high to low. You'll also notice that between the two groups, there are not any overlaps. So of all the schools in Washington County, they don't share our demographic or spending makeup. We are unique to our county in those categories. The accountability report cards are well-resourced. As you can see, they're pretty complicated in how they come to be. But I did include in here different resources that are provided by DPI so that if anyone wants to dig deeper, they can do so themselves, or they can email any one of us. But I just wanted to share it to be transparent, since there were so many changes this year. Are there any additional questions that you have? Or any slides or anything that you'd like to revisit for more explanation?
Board members, our opportunity for questions. Any questions?
I have a question.
Joel, go ahead.
Yeah, Tina, that seems like, you know, pretty good results overall. I'm just kind of curious, you know, the achievement scores looks like we're doing better with achievement than growth, and then the target group outcomes is even further down. So are you able to determine, like, why is that? Or, you know, what's causing that? Or does that inform curriculum and instruction in any way going forward? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Growth has been one of those areas that has been an area for improvement for the district for quite some time. We have some schools who excel in that priority area, and some schools that are still working to improve it. Growth is, in essence, if we can grow more, we can close achievement gaps, right? The more you grow, the closer you're going to become to reaching proficiency, which is that achievement. So there is always ongoing work for that that's happening at the building level. Through the lens of how curriculum can support that, that's much more in the area for target groups. Target Groups is really looking at the big gaps we have in performance. So in partnership with Student Services and the Curriculum Instruction Department, they want to make sure that we're serving all kids, that they have access to the curriculum, that they're supported in the classroom, and that if they need more, like, an intervention to help fill skill gaps, we're providing that. Superintendent Wimmer, would you have anything to add?
No, I just would highlight Tina's masterful at unpacking this to a very granular level for your principals, your school teams, et cetera. They're engaged in their buildings in kind of a deeper dive analysis to ferret out some personalized actions from each school in addition to some of the departmental things that she alluded to. I think just highlighting Kelly Downs from the curriculum and instruction side, and Emily Melstrand from the Student Services side, how they unpack that together so that they are getting more and more strategic around kind of which levers to pull so that we can yield some greater outcomes. So they've been working in partnership together on that as well.
Mr. Pickler, did I answer your question sufficiently?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it sounds like we're using this report to kind of game plan going forward, I guess. And that seems like the right thing to do, so.
Yeah. All year long, and especially in summer, when the assessment results come in, we dive in hard to make those plans. This report is just one of the big measures, but the work has been happening all year long.
I just had a question about the fact that the report card and how it's computed changed. We talked about that a little bit. Yeah, it sounds like the scorecard utilizes multiple years of data, either two or three. So it seems like somehow they were able to stitch that together.
Yeah.
That seems curious that they would change the yardstick, and they're adding the two yardsticks together, and it all works out. So your facial expression would suggest that that's an interesting question, so I'll ask it.
Yeah, they do piece it together. Last year, it was pieced together more than they highlighted it. So last year, in the areas of achievement, they had one year of data that had all the old tests on it. If you recall, when students used to take the old Wisconsin Forward Exam, they had to reach a percentile rank of about 60 to be deemed proficient. When they created the new exams, they readjusted the benchmarking to be aligned with basically national performance, which puts you between the 40th and 50th. So changing that big benchmark had a huge effect. Last year, they kept the old year and the new year on the report card and made all sorts of calculation changes to try to get them to match. Now that we have two years of the new assessment, that's why they only put two years on it, and they took all that kind of wonky calculation from the old test to the new test out. So while it is a big change, at least what we're looking at this year, albeit two years of info, it is the same two years of info.
That was my question.
There's no extra calculating happening in there.
Okay, that was my question. So now in theory, it's a bit more consistent.
Yes, and hopefully it will stay consistent going forward to the next school year as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Clearly, a lot of work goes into this and into dissecting it. And so I know throughout the year, we get some updates from you. So we look forward to that as well. When would be the next natural point that we would talk about next steps?
Yeah, so you'll hear from me again in later winter, end of January, early February, depending on where the dates and agendas fall. At that point, I'll be sharing with you all of our winter screening data. So the data we get from the Act 20 assessment for early literacy, as well as our universal screener STAR. STAR as a screener can be used to be predictive of Wisconsin Forward outcomes. So that winter snapshot will help us see if we're on track to hit the goals that we've set for the schools. So late winter, I'll be back.
Great. Ask all board members, any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it, Tina. Thank you. Next, we'll hear a construction report from Tim Harder, our Director of Facilities and Technology. Tim, good evening to you.
Good evening, board members. This one will be a little bit shorter because we're kind of in that point where, you know, nobody really likes outdoor construction in winter. And somebody said the word, four-letter word, snow and cold coming up. So let me switch over here real quick as I get through a few things. All right. So as we go through, a couple of quick updates this evening. This week, actually 32 minutes ago, if you really want to know, we printed, our architects printed what are known as our construction documents. That is a large set of drawings and specifications that go out to plan review, both at the state and the local level, as you can see on the screen. It will then be the process and the bid documents that we will utilize to go out to bid. And so that is approximately 1,400 pages, in case you're bored and you really want to read it, from specifications to drawings to you name it, that goes through that process. This is a public bid process, so it will be run through our construction manager, Fendorf. And you've met that team here before. That'll be led by Justine Behrens. And what'll happen is those bids will be returned to either her or myself, depending upon the trade package. And we do that for two reasons. The first reason being is sometimes Fendorf may want to bid on some of the packages that are in there. And so all of that comes to me till after bid closing time, so they can't see other people's bids. We're also trying to take advantage of some federal technology funding that is related to wiring and so forth. And as part of that, those bids have to come back to me directly to meet that federal grant purpose at that point in time. So that process will take place over the next month. Once we kind of package that all together, typically through that process, we release an addendum after bidders ask some questions and so forth. That all goes out to the state and the Village of Jackson for that review. So we're kind of in that little bit of a lull point. But you'll start to see, you know, in December, we'll have our earthwork package people who want to come in and work on that property for us. They'll come in and do some onsite work. We are trying to get creative with the Fendorf team on utilizing a portion of the old fire station as our construction management office, instead of paying and bringing in trailers and heating all of those different types of pieces. So we have a walkthrough related to some of those things. Besides Jackson, we do have that bidding piece. You know, the project itself, the bidding piece is a public bid. There's just some information on here for any contractors who may stumble across tonight's video or my presentation. Certainly, you can reach out to me, but if you go to our district website, there's a construction link, and then there's an entire page that is for contractor bidding. And so that is public out there, but they can ask as part of that process over the next few weeks. At the high school, really, we are working on some behind-the-scenes planning. We have just started to kick that off. Our architecture team has been onsite multiple times. They'll be again on Wednesday when there's no students in the building, really trying to document some behind-the-scenes things, get up and above the ceilings as we look at spaces that will be renovated. And then a little more forward piece is our department leaders, the departments, you know, Ms. Wimmer, myself, Jen Potter and our architecture team are meeting with those department leaders, really starting to identify as we look at the new spaces that will be renovated, just like we did with the Jackson team, the kindergarten team that's moving into Silverbrook. What do you need for space, and what equipment needs do you have in terms of what that looks like? And then last but not least, we've got Badger and Silverbrook designs happening behind the scenes. We'll do some renovation work at both of those buildings. Really, right now, we are on target to bid that early of 2026. That will go out, and right now, we're spending a large amount of our time on the mechanical systems and the fire alarm design over at Badger Middle School. That's a fairly large building to redo that project at that point. So that's all I have this evening, so I will answer any questions if you have any.
Great. Board members, any questions? Maybe just one on the bidding process. I know, I think with government projects, it's our municipality projects, there are different ways to handle the bids. You have an expert actually here. I should probably be, I could direct it right down to the end. But I hear of times when the bidding, they come in, they get torn open, and it goes to the lowest bidder. I hear other processes where, no, there's an evaluation of things like experience and quality. Talk about, what's the next step?
It is an open bid process. When those bids come in, we actually have a bid call with Fendorf, some of our architecture teams. And the first thing that happens is, A, just who bid it, right? Who bid? So did I have seven bids, six bids, five bids, 20 bids, et cetera? Then what will happen is really that bid is compared to make sure they are meeting the scope of the work. So that if both myself and you, Mr. Zweiger, both bid on this project, that somewhere in there, you didn't forget this section, and that's why you are cheaper. So our Fendorf team will go through and actually evaluate all of those bids beyond just the dollar item to make sure that they have covered everything, they have the right experiences, the required credentials and certifications that go with installing XYZ or, you know, doing structure work, et cetera, at that point in time. And then they bring the district a recommended potential candidate as part of that process. And then we have a conversation here on our side at that part. So it is more than just looking at the bottom line. It's really, can you do the work? Do you have the right workforce? Do you have the right certifications, all of those different pieces? And do you really have the right dollar amount that exists in that bid?
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Other questions?
So just to jump off that, you had talked about breaking out those projects, like some that Fendorf can bid on, vice versa. So does that mean when we ultimately get your recommendation, is it going to be separate bidders, depending on the project? Or is it going to be one, like, one candidate?
Nope, so it'll be by trade package. So when we bring a, similar to how we did Green Tree, McLean, by trade package, so you'll have electrical wiring. Under electrical wiring, I might have subbed out the low voltage wiring to you, to Mr. Zweiger. I might have put out the fire alarm system because we don't do that in-house. But really, it's who Fendorf is going to contract with. In our model, Fendorf is our construction manager. They then turn around and hold those contracts with everybody else. We are not at risk at those point in time. So we package those in so you see the recommended per-trade package. So concrete installation, steel, all of those different pieces. And sometimes you'll see multiple, you know, a company may bid on four or five of those trade packages.
Thank you. Other questions? Appreciate your report.
You bet.
Thank you. We move then to our financial report. We invite Lenny Hansen to the podium, our Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Hansen, good evening.
Good evening. I have four topics to review today. Three are pretty short, and one is a little bit more involved, so we'll jump right into it for today. First one is around fall and winter cash flow. And it's something that all school districts are talking about this time of year. So, and that's because the revenue and expense calendar of a school district is pretty much the same no matter where you go. And the low point in cash reserves for school districts in Wisconsin is generally sometime between November and January. That's because I put a few points here of some of the key times that big revenue drivers come in for school districts, and many of them are late winter or into the spring. Because of that, there are many districts that engage in short-term borrowing around mid-year. In fact, last year, over 100 school districts out of the 421 in the state engaged in short-term borrowing. This is our cash flow from last year, just to give you a picture of where our low point was at this point 12 months ago. So the green bar there is kind of, we call it the preferred liquidity level. So we try to stay above that level. But you really wouldn't need to engage in short-term borrowing unless you were at risk of hitting the absolute bottom of that graph there. So we had quite a buffer last year as we conducted this analysis. So the business office does an analysis first, trying to project where our cash flow low point will be. And then one of our financial partners, our financial advisor, it used to be PMA, now it's PTMA, as they merged with another company, but they conduct an independent analysis as well. And both of our analyses concurred that there is no need for short-term borrowing for 2025, 2026 in the West Bend School District. So before I jump to the next thing, any questions about that? All right. The next one is really just a review of a slide you've seen last time, but it's just- but it's just foreshadowing what you'll see in two weeks. In two weeks, we will be bringing forward the resolution before the board to issue 26.25 million in bonds that are associated with the referendum. This is the remaining dollar amount after 80 million was issued back in April. So we'll have that resolution for you December 8. The parameters that would be included in that resolution around maximum interest rate, maximum term, and amounts, and dates, that'll all look very similar to what you saw in the last resolution there. Once that moves forward, then we engage with Baird and Quarles and Brady, who, from the legal disclosure side, come in and help us out, so that we can be looking at a mid-January sale of the bonds, which then results in the district taking in the proceeds probably the first week of February. Any questions about that? All right. Must have done my job preparing everyone. That's what I like to hear. All right. So now we're going to get to a little bit lengthier conversation. And if you read the news last week, you might know a little bit about this topic. It is state special education reimbursement. So I'll do a little bit of background, just to re-ground us. We talked a lot about this when we talked about developing the budget several months ago. So we're going to do a little bit of a refresher. So special education reimbursement is funds received from the state. It pays for some costs that are associated, not act, not just for educating students with special needs, but other special programs throughout school districts as well. So the state partially reimburses districts for those costs. Historically, the state has tended to come in under in what is anticipated to be reimbursed versus what actually becomes reimbursed. And then when you look at the long-term, multi-decade history of the special education reimbursement program in the state, it has dropped a ton. So if you go back many decades, you would find that the state used to reimburse more than 60% of costs for special education to districts. And last year, it was right around 30%. So half the amount of commitment to some of our neediest learners across the state of Wisconsin. So you can use this reimbursement. These funds are for a number of things. So it could be staffing, can be purchase services, supplies, equipment, any number of things that support these programs. I listed some of the more common positions that are funded by these dollars that come from the state. As you can see, there are a lot of really important positions, and a lot of important positions that, as I said, serve some of our most in-need students with most unique needs as well. But also, not just special education. You'll see nurses, counselors, a whole host of non-special education positions that are supported by these funds as well. So last year, we had roughly around $14 million that was eligible for reimbursement. The state had in the budget touted its promise to deliver a third reimbursement, and it came up short by about two and a half percentage points or so. That remaining shortfall that the state cannot reimburse due to the budget that's passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, that shortfall of almost $10 million has to be covered by other revenues, a transfer from the general fund over to the special education fund to cover that shortfall. So here's a history of that reimbursement rate. So in '23, '24, the state promised a third, and they came in just about a point short of that reimbursement. In '24, '25, they promised a third again, and they came up even more short. But then you heard a lot of talk this past summer about how the state was really committed to ramping up that reimbursement rate. So you can see that they anticipated a 42% reimbursement rate for the current year, which is almost a 10% increase from where the promise was last year, and then even more so up to 45 the following year. So here is where reality comes in, because DPI provided an update early last week. So the 42% was what was in the state budget and what you heard legislators touting, that they were going to increase that, that reimbursement amount, too. That would mean that the West Bend School District would have gotten right around $5.9 million in aid through special education aid. Because of the state's history of historically under-delivering in this area, we budgeted conservatively, and budgeted that we would, that the state would maybe come in about 2.5% short of that. So we budgeted at a 39.5% reimbursement, which was pretty common across other school districts and business managers throughout the region. That would have meant that the state would have delivered right around $5.5 million. So our budgeted amount in the budget approved by the board, presented at the annual meeting, conservatively estimated that the state would come up about $350,000 short of what it had promised. On last week, Monday, DPI dropped a bombshell across the state when it said they will only commit to 35% based on the funds that are allocated, missing the initial promise that we all heard about in July by 7%, which is unheard of in the history of this funding source. So that means that the actual amount to be expected, instead of the almost $5.9 million here, is probably likely to be right around $4.9 million. So almost a million-dollar shortfall from the promise that everybody in Madison was touting in July of the 42%. And even below our conservatively budget, 39.5%, another $630,000 under what we had included in the budget. Across the state, that means that special education is going to be underfunded by state government by more than $130 million beyond what was promised. We were informed on November 17. To put that in perspective to when all the other important decisions around budget take place, that's four and a half months after the state budget actually got passed. We are already more than a third of the way through our fiscal year of our expenses and our planning. And state statute requires that contracts be issued to teachers in April. So we are seven months past when the state says, hey, you've got to get those contracts issued. And now, seven months later, they pull out several hundred thousand dollars in revenue that they had initially promised from Madison. So what does this mean? Well, it means we're going to be sharpening our pencils and getting down to work very hard and very quickly. We're going to have to make adjustments to expenses that haven't yet been incurred this year. We'll continue to update the board about ways that we are addressing this. You're going to see, I've already seen a lot of news articles throughout the state about this. You're going to continue to see districts talk about this. I would imagine other districts with board meetings tonight are having similar conversations. And we will then not only have to figure out this year, but this likely means they will come up well short again in '26, '27. So there's going to be a lot of adjustments in budget planning that's going to happen, both in West Bend here, as well as pretty much every school district throughout the state, as we unpack what this announcement from DPI means. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that meanwhile, in Madison, there is $650 million in surplus funds with no plans for how to expense it in the state budget. That's on top of the $2 billion that are in the state's rainy day fund. Just for context, the rainy day fund, which was established back in the 1980s, has only ever been accessed once by the state. It was in 2008 when they utilized $57 million from it. So almost 40 times what's ever been used in a single draw from the rainy day fund is sitting in that reserve. So in Madison, there is no shortage of resources available. But at this point, state government, which is both the legislature and the governor, do not have any plans to address any of these budgetary challenges using any of those funds. Any questions about that topic?
Go ahead. So what am I missing from, and I, I'm sorry, this sounds dumb, but what am I missing from when the budget is passed and they say this amount of dollars allocated to when DPI pulls the rug out from us? What's, what's the disconnect?
Well, that's the right question. So here's what happens. First of all, the estimates that they base their budget on are based on what costs were a year and a half prior to the passage of that budget, which doesn't make a lot of sense. That's how they've always done it, and that's why they tend to come up short. In spite of knowing that that approach always comes up short, they don't change their process and calculation for how they calculate that, right? Then, they, the DPI does not collect the data on prior year's expenses until September. So in September, school districts are submitting what they spent the prior year. DPI, or I shouldn't say, the state, they allocate a specified amount of money, not a percentage. So you'll see the terms some certain or some sufficient. So special education reimbursement is a some certain amount of money, meaning they will allocate a certain number of dollars. Then they will tout that that equals, based on prior data, this percentage of special education costs. It is not a some sufficient amount. Some sufficient would mean, hey, we're going to make good on 42% no matter what that ends up being. There are some elements in the state budget that they do fund in a some sufficient manner. Education is not one of them. They only, as well as several others, but they only allocate an X number of dollars. And if it costs more to educate the students of the state of Wisconsin, then it's on the local school district to just figure it out. So what happens is, in September, districts are submitting, well, you, you can start submitting earlier, but by September is the deadline. You're submitting your data. Then DPI compiles it all and determines, oh, boy, the amount of money they allocated, that's not equal to 42%. That's actually only equal to 35%. This is why throughout the budget negotiations in prior years, but especially this year, there was a lot of advocacy to make special education reimbursement a some sufficient amount of money. School districts are, like I said, already a third of the way through their budget year. To basically cancel expected revenue is extremely challenging for all of these, you know, local districts. Whether you're a small district, a big district, it's, it's challenging regardless. So, does that explain it?
It does. And I agree with you. Why would you, why would you tout a certain percentage if it's not really tied to a percentage in a sense? And that doesn't make sense to me. But, thank you.
Because it's politically a big winner to tout a percentage, right?
Yep.
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 Other questions? It's an important topic.
All right. Thank you. All right. Last brief item here, just around financial forecasting. So what, just kind of laying forward the calendar as we look ahead. So in December, I'll share a number of the core budget assumptions that are going into our multi-year forecast. So those will be things like just anticipated increases in costs across a whole variety of areas. What do we anticipate over the next several years? Insurance costs to go up, services, supplies, energy, all those sorts of things. We'll share those assumptions, collect any feedback from the board about maybe where those assumptions ought to be tweaked before we plug in our final numbers into our forecast model. That then will help us yield what a multi-year budgetary forecast will present. We'll be able to bring that forward in January, to not just look at it from a one-year basis for, across multiple years. And then post-forecast, we, as, as the forecast always does, it will demonstrate, you know, some sort of gap that we have to work to close. And then post-forecast, we'll continue to report to the board on different opportunities and adjustments that are made, so that we can get closer and closer to finding that balanced budget position when we look at 2026, '27's budget year. So just kind of a timeline of how things will roll out. Any questions about that?
Yeah, Lenny has a question. So is this forecast developed at an account, a level of detail, like individual accounts, or is it more aggregated, like financial statement line items?
So this one is done by what you would call the object level in our, object and fund level in our 24-character WOOFAR accounting system. So when you're looking at object, that allows you to break it down by each individual item. So within staffing, for example, the pension contribution is one line, and that will be separately analyzed. And it'll be analyzed from each fund. So say the pension contribution in Fund 10, Fund 27, 29, 80, and so forth. So it looks at it from each object level. Those are those three-digit numbers. So you can look at each staffing area. You can look at, there's, there's dozens of objects within the supply category and so forth.
All right. Thank you. Look forward to seeing it.
Any other questions? We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Wimmer, it is time for the superintendent's report.
Well, Tim is the one who said the word winter first. So I would just like that to be reflected in the minutes. But I can follow up with some winter sport updates, as well as some other winter things. So for the most part, our winter sports have begun at the high schools. We've already had some basketball games. And this winter, we look forward to hosting boys' and girls' basketball, bowling, hockey, skiing, snowboarding, and boys' swim and dive. Just a reminder, this is the first year that our girls' gymnastics and our boys' wrestling will be co-op with east-west combined teams. And this is the first winter season where many of our sports will be competing in their new Glacier Trails Conference. So it's exciting. Check out our websites. Please join us to cheer on our student athletes. And a reminder about winter weather. So we'll put this in the district news, but just a reminder that our website would have details on any potential school closures due to weather this winter. So every year, we remind everyone around the decision-making before that. Our target is prior to 5:30 a.m. Generally, superintendents are going into calls at 3 a.m. on those. We're consulting with weather officials, plow truck drivers, sometimes, you know, police navigating the roads, just so we know and understand we can have safe passage for the thousands of students and staff arriving at our schools. We would broadcast that, not just on our TV news, but we would send direct messages via phone messenger, emails, our websites, our social media. So we just do a reminder to our families to make sure your Skyward accounts are updated. So you'll see that start running in the news in preparation, because, as we said, we live in Wisconsin, and that could happen at any time. Kenosha's already had their first snow day. So, fingers crossed. A final reminder to our public, that we would invite you to participate in focus groups hosted by our district on school counseling services. So there's one in-person focus group left on Tuesday, December 2, from 5:00 to 5:30 at the high schools. And we would encourage you to check that out on our website or go through our newsletter, so that you can RSVP and participate in that. Also, don't forget that Columns is hosting its annual Holiday Pops concert by the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, Tuesday, December 16, 7:30 p.m. at the Silver Lining Arts Center at our high schools. Tickets are now on sale for $35 each and available at Horicon Bank, Jeff Spirits on Main, Pick Heaters, Sendix, or at the door. Reminder, Columns is a community organization that supports scholarships for our students. So this is their largest fundraiser. So we encourage our community to participate and contribute. Some other just highlights that are occurring, I attended, I think it was just last week, a signing ceremony for two West Spartans, signing on their, it was the National Day of Letter of Intent for NCAA Division One athletes. So congratulations, Dawn Walters. She will attend the University of Minnesota for swimming. And then Autumn Sabotka will attend Iona University in New York State for acrobatics and tumbling. And then the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association has named West's head coach, Taylor Riplinger, the Regional Coach of the Year. And senior Sean McElroy was named as an all-region linebacker, and junior James Banks, an all-region defensive lineman. Not to be left out of accolades, the American Volleyball Coaches Association recently announced the Fifth Annual Best and Brightest Awards for Girls' High School Senior Volleyball Student Athletes. And from the West volleyball team, Morgan Winkler and Amelia Dubey were selected the first team, and Emmy Miller was selected to the third team. So to be eligible for those senior student athletes must have earned at least a 3.5 GPA during their junior year and played in 50% of their varsity team sets during their senior season. So congratulations to all those students. I'm sure when our student reporters are in, they'll continue to highlight all the amazing collective efforts of, of our students. I'm always impressed, and then I always have that moment of like, wow, what, what was I doing with my life in high school? They're so well-accomplished and accomplished so many things. So we're really proud of our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer on her report? All right, seeing none. Superintendent Wimmer, I think you have the next item. We're on to discussion items. High school configuration, financial analysis.
Yep, I will switch spots. I would like to just highlight the contributions of our athletic directors, as well as Julie Marks, our comptroller, Lenny Hansen, Assistant Superintendent, collective efforts as we untangled some of the financial implications around our high school configuration. So leading into this, we talked about our academic program, our co-curriculars, and then highlighted the nuances of our athletic program. So a lot of the financial considerations really rest in that athletics piece. So I wanted to walk us through some of those things tonight. So first, I'm going to start with projected enrollment, so that we knew and understood the context. Recall that we have about 1,003 students who are Spartans and 815 sons at this time. That's considered a baseline. We know that our enrollment, we're not alone in facing declining birth rates, et cetera, across the state and nation, will continue to decline. across the state and nation, will continue to decline. So I wanted to give a snapshot of that as we go because our conversations have been focused on opportunities for students, and I just want to show there will be less students at the high schools. So I give you kind of the next couple of years, and this is us just taking our cohort and moving them forward. And these are kind of our student cohorts. So I took the last one, which is our kindergarten students, so you see that gap in years. So that last group, who are kindergartners now, you know, that would decline at a rate where we would just have over 1,200 students collectively at the high school. So just giving that perspective. And then conversely, Lenny was helpful in talking about the implication that we know that students and enrollment drive so much of our revenue, what the revenue reduction on the other side of that from the baseline year would mean. So you can see less students, significant changes in revenue and our funding of the high school in general. Anything else you need? I did okay on that one?
Kids equal dollars in school finance, right? So when you see that percentage decrease, the revenue decreases by the same amount.
I was going to say that, one, I think, when I look at that 2038 number and seeing how much our students are going to decrease, I mean, that's a scary number for all of society, and I hope we take that in for just a minute. But at the same time, I know communities are continuing to grow. So like Jackson, right, they're booming right now. We have a new subdivision coming in in West Bend. So are you taking that into account? Are you just taking the kindergarten kids and ramping them up?
Right now, this is just our simple cohorts. When we take in that kind of UW population study, hopefully, all those elements, we could stabilize right in that anywhere 1,300 to 1,500 range. Because again, you're looking to be an amazing district, you're cultivating families, there's growth, we certainly have a lot of buildable land, we work with our city planners on that. So that's just an uninterrupted of the cohort. The other question was around, are we going to be some kind of outlier in the region if we were this big of a high school? So I just wanted to take a moment and talk about kind of the largest, over 1,000-student high schools in the area and how many miles away they are from us. So usually, there's anywhere to eight to 10 different districts in your, well, any one of the five conferences we participate in right now. So it was interesting because I was going to cap it in the 80s, I'm like, nope, sometimes we compete against Oshkosh. Nope, sometimes we go to Green Bay for dance. Sometimes, you know, some of those more unique pieces. But again, you can see there's plenty of schools. The WIA works to provide not just school size, but competitive balance as well as region. But again, we're not in charge of that decision. That's something we move through. And this is a screenshot of today to our 18-18. Correct. This is, okay. So we would be coming in at 18-18 in this lineup. This is today's numbers. They will face the same decline that we do. That is not something unique to us. So I know that we're going to talk about savings. Right behind it is costs. Because when we talked last time, we talked about if we were to change anything in configuration and then extended opportunities for students, we talked about, our last slide added multiple teams. A lot of JV extensions, JV3, some different varsity reserve teams, all of those pieces. So first, in our financial analysis, when Lenny was talking about all the different objects codes, he ran every piece of everything associated with athletics. We removed out our duplicate team. So we collected and we removed all those pieces, came up with these buckets instead of object codes and things that were meaningful, and removed, again, the duplicated team. So that's where we get this number of a little over $600,000. And again, we have that weird thing because they're, they must remain separated, so I can't let East and West be together because they're different schools, they're different teams. So sometimes we, you know, there were barriers to us capitalizing on some of the efficiencies that we have in other places automatically. So what would it cost to reconfigure that? We would have to add in that extended program. We added up all those teams. And what would that mean to add those coaches, right? We're transferring maybe some head coaches, we're expanding that. What would that be? We wouldn't have to go beyond in conferences, but you're hosting other events, what do you need? We won't have to replicate some of that software that we're forced to kind of buy into. But you can see adding back the staff to pull off that extension of programs, you're looking at about a $95,000 add to make that continuum of experience happen. Then we're looking at some one-off costs. So if you were to reconfigure, we looked at the uniforms in two spots. We have many teams that are already co-op'd. They're predominantly using black as a base color. They branded us West Bend. So we looked at giving them that same opportunity, even though it already says West Bend. If we were to rebrand in some way, what would that? So we just kind of split that around how we might be able to phase that to capitalize. But you're looking at 200, well over a quarter of a million dollars in just uniforms, having to, again, because you're not just adding that team, you're rebranding everything in that.
Otherwise, our uniforms are on a replacement cycle, right? So this is the startup, and then they all end up on a cycle.
So then we would replicate that rotation, that extension. Like, we were even down to looking at some of their costs. Okay, if I have this many more helmets to recondition and put on their cycle, how many, you know, do I have to do this, that, and the other to come up with these pieces? So looking at that, knowing that I would have to kind of extend those costs every single year in perpetuity at 95,000 to expand that program and keep it expanded, and then kind of my predominant, that first year, like, I've got to get those teams that are sitting out right now as East and Spartans, and I've got to get them something. And then pushing into maybe year two, maybe that secondary, so that the students who are already co-op'd, they could also rebrand in some way, putting out some expenses. And then you can see after you've got those initial startups, you're still maintaining that base extension of a contribution at 95,000 to keep your program. So then just starting adding up some cumulative savings there. Question?
Yeah, just, I see the, you have the one, the uniforms and the co-op's rebrand. What about rebrand for like signage, you know, like the actual, all the rebranding that would come with, you know, gym floors and signage and everything else, and chairs and bleachers and, you know, everything that comes with the school stadiums, all that stuff?
Well, your bleachers and your large gymnasium is part of the referendum. So we're looking at kind of the bleachers now, looking at those pieces. So there's some of that, like you said, some paint. So a lot of our branding that you see, the wraps, et cetera, are other outside contributions. So we'd look to change that and do those things. And then also, we're starting some efforts with our booster clubs and others because you know that none of the athletics were part of our referendum pieces. So to your point, you know, maybe using that larger bucket that you have out of that 600,000, you can see you only need parts and pieces. There would be dollars to attend to a larger-scale piece. There's a couple, you know, like you said, some hallways, some paints, some things of that nature. We've always hosted two schools in there. So again, there's just some elements and some areas and spaces that are really specifically branded to both, to welcome and help outsiders understand that there's two schools here. And again, those were some outside contributions. But there would be costs, you know, back in the day when you'd have to print new letterhead and things of that nature, you know, we don't have to do those things anymore. But certainly, there would be startup costs with that.
The other line item that I just want to look at is back up in the savings. I think it's probably something we shouldn't just gloss over in discussion, but it says staff, 500,000. Where does all that savings come from? Because we're still serving the same number of students, so where are we saving all of that staff?
You have a reduction of athletic director, some associated staff, and then all your head coach positions versus adding JV, which are much lesser expensive positions.
Okay, so this isn't necessarily, it's a restructuring in a way.
Correct.
So you're saying we still need the same number of coaches, the same number of everything because there's still that many kids, they just won't be two head coaches.
Correct. Yeah, which are the significant pays. So they got restructured into supporting roles.
And then right now, I think, you know, our athletic directors, I don't know if they have like staff or anything like that, but, you know, I'm assuming that obviously now they're trying to get to twice as many, you know, or maybe some, you know, other events that they have to cover. Do they have additional, like, do we have to add staff into that, or?
Not necessarily. If you want to speak to that.
But one athletic director would take over like all of that?
We've been looking at what similar-sized schools staff, and we pretty much built this based on modeling the staffing of those, of the athletics department, on how those schools operate.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't want a less-than experience. Like I said, we're not, you know, looking at this just merely from a cost-savings perspective. We still want to focus on the opportunities and experience for kids.
Sure. And is this just athletics, not teaching, administration?
No, no. So this is around, so when our enrollment goes down, no different than we've experienced already at our elementaries and those pieces, we generally, because of the pace that that comes through, we take care of that through attrition. So that is separate. So there might be, you know, like you said, reductions over time in those pieces, but they have nothing to do with the configuration. We're not looking at changing the class size, changing the opportunities that our kids have. That's driven by enrollment on those kids, but not configuration. Like I said, I could say you have six schools under that umbrella. It really doesn't matter for that piece.
Wouldn't, maybe I'm just looking at this wrong, but wouldn't that staff cost savings then, wouldn't that be in annual savings? I mean...
Ongoing.
So that's an ongoing, these are ongoing savings.
Perpetual.
Perpetual savings.
So when you look at that, so as we're adding that into the budget, it starts kind of snowballing. You know that after you have all those startup costs in those pieces, yes, in perpetuity, you're going to be changing. We just added up the first.
But, and I think that's a very important point and makes this quite compelling. At the same time, we could be in a position where to do this, we have to expend dollars day one.
Absolutely.
We won't have achieved all of it, so from a budgetary perspective, we'll just need to account for that somehow if we were to move forward with this. Thank you. That was my question. Other questions?
Picking back on Mr. Jenkins' question, well, I understand the, you know, the approach with attrition and the reductions that happen over time, but would there not be reductions in administrative areas unrelated to sports?
There will, but that aren't, we didn't connect those to a configuration conversation. Those are separate. They would happen around enrollment. So that would be a separate issue. We didn't want to commingle it. So to your point, as they lose students, no different than we did across the whole district, we'd be looking at that. But it's separate, it's separate from the configuration of the high school. It's a separate issue.
Yeah, just to, if Joe, if I can just piggyback on that, just, we don't have this configured, but today, if we had a head principal of East and a head principal of West, we would look forward to say, we don't need two.
Correct.
But we're not, what you're saying is we're not exactly set up that way to begin with.
We don't have that, correct.
So there wouldn't be anything significant that would be changed in that level of the structure?
Correct. Because those are kind of total numbers. So the number, I have one head principal, I have a certain slate of APs, I have a certain slate of, and that, that's dependent on its overall enrollment, separate from the configuration.
So just because things have probably changed since I went there, including administration, what areas of the academic experience are still split between West and East?
None. That was the first presentation.
Yep.
We have one co-curricular program. They each maintain their own national honor society. Otherwise, our students have full access to the continuum of courses that are presented at the high school. So they make efforts in the first round of scheduling, especially at a class, like a base course, like everyone's got to take freshman English. Largely, they'll be separated by East and West as a first move, but then when it gets down to a section, they will commingle and have opportunities.
But that's kind of what I was asking. So there is currently like an East English and a West English, and an East Science and a West Science. So even that, at that level, would it exist anymore?
It would still, yeah, you're correct. So right now, staff are associated with a school. They might teach all kids, but they have an identity as, oh, I'm East, I'm West, you know, which, and they work together as a department.
But the amount of teachers that you need might not change because it's still the same amount of students you have to be teaching either way.
Right. It's the logo on the shirt that they would wear. And you see most of them wear both anyway because they're cognizant that they teach all kids.
I mean, we have East teachers who teach more West students than East students.
It's just a general assignment. So there were some other pieces too that you can't really pin down. So when you look at gate receipts, that's the money you take in for varsity-level competition, those pieces. You're looking at around $20,000 in revenue that goes back into those programs. That will shift in some way, but you can't put your finger quite on it because right now, I'm splitting because I split my Friday night football crowd. I might have more people come to the Friday night game if I'm only offering one versus being split at the away game. You just can't put your finger on how that would be measured, so we just wanted to call that out. Because those are generally the ones that generate revenue, which are your varsity. So even though we're expanding JV, and I might have, again, the same number of people coming for an audience, it may shift in some of the revenue associated there. And then right now, because of its current configuration, I cannot put a price tag on the accelerated depreciation of our facilities because I am having a home game every single night. I'm having, I need multiple spaces and kind of the wear and tear on that turf, those fields, I can't put a number on that. And then when I shift to, you know, I'm going to have, you know, one more JV game, and I might need lights over here, but I'm not going to need it over here, there's going to be some nuances to utilities that we couldn't. Again, in this kind of series, we wanted to lead in kind of some of the big ideas to, you know, kind of check with the board tonight. Our next pieces in December, we would be coming back to frame what a kind of January, February, full community engagement would look like in the topic. So it's just kind of looking for direction from the board. We've seen a lot of different components, talked about some big pictures, and we can, it might generate more questions, and hey, I want us to dig in deeper on this. But for us, we'd like to proceed in the next two December meetings, as forecasted, to start talking about what would engaging our community look like? That's planning for the focus groups, that's planning for the full community engagement, that's being an attention to surveying and on those pieces. Because I'd ask the board to make that kind of decision by December before we leave for break so that we're coming back and starting those efforts. So just really collectively from the board, if you're okay with proceeding to December conversations with planning what that would look like, it doesn't commit you to executing that, but it commits us to the next two board meetings to start planning for that.
So you're asking us if it's okay for you folks to proceed with planning what engagement would look like?
Correct. That means, yep, that means December 8th and 15th, which was the first chart that I led with on process, I'd be coming back and I would start framing, and we'd have a deep dive into community engagement, survey development for potential launch. And again, you can move through those. We have December 8th and 15th. We'll see what kind of agenda items are needed on the 15th. If we kind of put that as a placeholder, sometimes we only do one board meeting in December, so we'll check that agenda development-wise. So you don't have to make a commitment to what that is until we flesh that out together and say. But I'd like to, I'd recommend that we move through those conversations in December to really determine what engagement with our community looks like on the topic.
Ken?
Just my input on that, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to pursue engaging the community in this, you know, even if, regardless, I mean, I think it's good to know where we're at as a community for that anyway. So I don't see any downside to planning to engage the community as fully as possible.
I don't either. Board members, generally any contrary feedback? I mean, it sounds like what you come back to us then is, this is what it would look like. We would have these focus groups, we would do this, we would do that.
Sure. Recall that we started talking about that process, and we've already done an initial feedback loop from our staff, families, students around what did they want, had some preliminary conversations. This is us putting meat on those bones so that it passes through the board, so that you look at that, contribute to that, and then determine next steps. Because again, in that big picture, that moves us into community engagement leading into spring, so that January, February, really digging in. So this gave the board and our public kind of a flavor of some of the information. I've met with people who've been on committees, who have been tasked with this before and kind of run through what were we presenting, thankful, you know, like, oop, you're spot-on, and here's a report we did, that kind of piece. So everyone's had some time to think and process, like, okay, if there's a next layer to dig deeper on academics, on co-curriculars, on some of these pieces, what does going deeper look like in preparation for full community engagement? That would be something that I'd ask you to reflect on for that. And then we would plan on bringing that in December then.
Board members, any objections to that approach? Otherwise, you'll be coming back to us really in December with an idea of what's our methodology for engagement?
Absolutely. Yep, a deeper framework together for that.
The suggestion I'd have is, it seems athletics is a big core part of this, so I'll be eager to see how we intend to significantly engage those constituents.
And they're, they're so unique that we anticipate that's when we talk about focus groups being a little bit different. So I think people are most recently familiar with our referenda engagement pieces, and while we certainly would create some community-wide opportunities, I would anticipate that we're sitting down individually with sports by sport to really talk about implications, thoughts, feelings, as part of focus group efforts.
We look forward to hearing more.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was our only discussion item tonight, so we move to future agenda items. And we have a board meeting calendar. We have the following meetings scheduled for December, all to take place here at the Education Service Center. December 2nd, Curriculum Committee. And then we have board meetings scheduled for December 8 and December 15, 5:30 p.m. And we encourage the public to look for the official postings. In the event of the time or the place or the date, these may change. Any questions on our board meeting calendar? I'll just bring up Superintendent Wimmer, and you alluded to this at the podium. We will proceed with the December 8th board meeting. Whether we proceed with the December 15 board meeting depends on if we have agenda items, correct? But for now, we'll have these as placeholders.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions? Any other items then for follow-up and communication? All right, hearing none. We have a topic that is appropriately discussed in executive session. That's why I've moved to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. We have a motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Krueger?
Yes.
Mr. Pickler?
Yes.
Dr. Tabaz?
Yes.
Ms. Aragat?